Ready, we're gonna call this meeting to order. It is 7:07 PM. And if we could have roll call, please.
Councilmember Bowles.
Here.
Councilmember Big Stick.
Present.
Councilmember Beer.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer.
Present.
Mayor Badalas.
Here. And I'll now read the land acknowledgement. The city of Pacifica acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral homeland of the Ramatouche-Alone peoples who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. We honor the Ramatouche-Alone peoples for their enduring commitment to Mother Earth. As the indigenous protectors of this land, in accordance with their traditions, the Ramatouche-Alone have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as caretakers of this place, as well as for all people who reside in their traditional territory. We affirm their sovereign rights as first people and wish to pay our respects to the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Ramatouche-Alone people. And now Mary Beer will lead us in a salute to the flag. Okay, and on to special proclamations. We have a proclamation of the city of Pacifica in recognition of Sports Hall of Fame 2024 inductees. Whereas for over seventy-five years, Pacifica has produced many talented athletes in both amateur and professional sports. And whereas the Pacifica Sports Club has formulated a Sports Hall of Fame to honor local sports celebrities. And whereas the city of Pacifica recognizes the Sports Hall of Fame as the lasting tribute to the rich sports history of Pacifica. And whereas the city of Pacifica has dedicated a wall of fame to the enshrines at the Pacifica Community Center. And whereas this year marks the thirty-third anniversary of the Pacifica Sports Hall of Fame induction ceremony, which will be held on February twenty-fourth, 2024. And whereas the 2024 Pacifica Sports Hall of Fame inductees are Terranova Oceana High School Wrestling Coach Brent Crowley, University of California Berkeley All-American Baseball Athlete Gary Hernandez, Major League Player Keith Hernandez, and California Interscholastic Federation Executive Natalie Talbot Thorn. Now therefore, I, Sue Badalas, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Pacifica and all of its citizens do hereby recognize the outstanding contribution these four Sports Hall of Fame inductees have made to sports recreation in the community and join with the Pacifica Sports Club in honoring you on this special occasion. And thereby, I proclaim the week of February nineteenth through February twenty-fourth as Pacifica Sports Hall of Fame Week, done this twelfth day of February 2024. And would Horace like to get up and come to the mic? And then the council can all speak. I have no lights.
Last guy?
Okay.
Thank you, Horst Inshall, President of the Pacifica Sports Club. Thank you very much, council, for recognizing these individuals. There's a couple of the people listed there have really have outstanding records over the year. I know that one name you'll certainly recognize if you're a baseball person is Keith Hernandez, who plays professional baseball with the St. Louis Cardinals and the New York Mets over the years. So we're very happy to recognize these individuals. You know, baseball and sports in Pacifica dates back over seventy-five years. The first documented sport game that was played in Pacifica is about nineteen forty-eight, a baseball game that was played at the, where the action that Moose Lodge stands today. And you can see we've progressed over the years and we've come a long ways with various programs. And the sports club has honored individuals from all aspects of sports, from wrestling to judo, to weightlifting, baseball, softball, soccer. And so we just want to continue to recognize the athletes of Pacifica who have brought recognition to our great community. And by doing so, we do the Pacifica Sports Hall of Fame. As you mentioned, Mayor, this is the thirty-third year. And actually, we could have gotten a little bit more if the pandemic had not hit us a couple of times. And so that's one of the reasons that it's the thirty-third. But anyway, just on behalf of all the honorees and the Pacifica Sports Club, I thank you very much. And I'm proud to say that we're gonna have four representatives of the city council at the dinner. So it's great to have the support of the council and the city. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mary. What's, stay there, Horace.
Yeah, stay there, Horace.
We're gonna. Please, thank you.
Horace, I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for always, always bringing our community together. And I can remember, like, just looking up at that wall in the community saying, like, oh, I wish I could be in there. But you know, I never made first team all-league or anything, so I don't belong on that wall. But a lot of people that I played sports with are up there. And it's really wonderful. It's really wonderful what you do for our community and for our athletes. And you always gave me recognition by taking my picture while I sat on the bench at the basketball game. So thank you so much for that. Be like, take my picture, Horace, Horace. Thanks a lot, Horace.
There's actually a hundred and seventy people on that wall. So it's one of those things that we hope to, you know, eventually expand around the other side. But you have a hundred and seventy in the last thirty-three years.
Tiger.
Even if you don't make it to the wall, it's really inspiring to know how many athletes our community has. And especially when it comes to the kiddos. Any of them participating in it learned really good values about cooperation, about being good competitors, about what it means to play a game in a positive way. And so, thank you so much for enshrining what sport means to Pacifica as a community. Thank you very much. And thank you, Marion, for also supporting. Without you, I know there's no Horace.
Horace, I just want to thank you for this, for the Sports Hall of Fame and for that action and the wall and all of that. But as Tiger was saying, for all of it. And as Mary was saying, back to her childhood, and she's so young, other people's childhoods before that. But seriously, you know, when I look at old tribunes and I see the whole sports section, like, big section, and I've read your articles for years, and just keeping that going in our community. You never, you never let up. You've never failed us. You're just one hundred percent the Energizer Bunny, going, going, going. So thank you.
I just want to thank you, Horace, for bringing this to our attention and to the community's attention. And it is an inspiration for our youth to see that here, homegrown in Pacifica, we have these athletes that have made it at the national level. We also have an athlete here on our council who was a Hall of Famer, who was inducted, was that, just last year or two years ago? Two years ago for weightlifting. So there's really nothing you can, you can't do, kids. Give it a try. Even if you end up on the D-League hockey team for the worst players like me, it's still fun.
But thank you, once again. Once again, when I started working for the Tribune, I just thought that was so important that we recognize the athletes. And the children in school had been recognized for their education, the artists had been recognized for their artistic work. And I just think it's important that our athletes, as you just mentioned, some have gone on to outstanding history and doing sports history-wide, not only just in the United States, but professionally, turned professionally and gone overseas to be a star. So it's amazing for our community. So thank you very much.
And I'd like to thank you, because yes, I am on the Wall of Fame. And I'm privileged to be there and feel really special. I didn't do any sports until I was in my forties. So I definitely feel privileged. And like Sue, I was gonna say, I read your articles every week when I got the Tribune, every week. And just to see, oh, who do I know in there? Oh, who's that? Oh, yeah. You know? I knew them when they were little.
Just a sidebar story on that. We used to have what we called the athlete of the week years ago. And to this day, as you all know, I work at the Giants as an usher. And to this day, and Marion, she works at the Giants as an usher. And to this day, people will come up to me and say, I was the athlete of the week in nineteen sixty-eight, seventy, seventy-five. They still remember, as you said, that, that people still remember those stories. So anyway, thank you again.
Okay, and now is there anyone from the public who'd like to get up and speak? Not too many people here. How about on the phone? Okay. Horace, we could take a picture. He said he didn't, he said he didn't want to, but I said we were gonna do it.
She's on the wall.
Mayor Badalas, we have one raised hand after we close public comment.
Um, okay. Um, I'll reopen the public comment for the one raised hand.
It is for the number ending in one-six-zero-six.
Uh, good evening, this is Sue, this is Sue DeGree. I'm glad I got in. I just want to say hats off to you, Horace. I think I met, went to every meeting. For those of you interested in the history of our wonderful city, if you go to these meetings, you will get a wonderful history of Pacifica. And I thank you, Horace. You deserve many honors for this. And congratulations to all the athletes. Take care.
Thank you, Sue. Okay, moving on. We are moving on to the consent agenda. Items one through twelve. Does anyone on the council wish to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Mayor Badalas, before we proceed with the consent calendar, I just have a note for one of the items on consent. Item number nine for the Chit Chat Cafe lease agreement. The agreement that was attached to the staff report requires a minor revision in Section 3.2 base rent. To read, the monthly base rent for the initial term shall be one thousand nine hundred per month, for a total of twenty-two thousand eight hundred per year. And that is to be consistent with the base rent amounts listed in the basic lease information portion of that agreement. So it's just a typographical error that needs to be corrected.
Thank you for correcting that. Does anyone on council wish to remove anything from consent? Are there any public comments on consent? And I believe there is. So there is a public comment. Okay. Okay, there's one public comment. So David Liel.
All right. Thank you for hearing me tonight. My name's David Liel. And I come to you tonight, speaking as a member of the community, a father and a coach.
Can you, can you list for the record what item, consent item?
Oh, twelve.
Thank you.
Yeah, I forgot my card, sorry. So I urge you tonight to approve city staff's recommendation and to approve the construction services agreement with Armor Fence to replace the Fairway Park backstops. My son's entering his fourth year in Little League. And in the four years we've been part of Pacifica National Little League, Fairway Park has been a very magical place. Any given Saturday between March and June, you'll see hundreds of families out there, different ages of kids, playing baseball, then after the games, running around, climbing in the hills, building bonds across ages. It's, it's a really awesome place. And we're in the midst of upgrading that park with the recent playground equipment, the investments that the league is making into the park. And then also with this item tonight, if approved, we'll continue to really help the community in terms of keeping youth sports thriving in Pacifica. I wrote a bunch of stuff out, so I just want to make sure I cover everything. Let's see. So as you may know, Pacifica has also combined their two Little Leagues this year. So we are now a joint Pacifica Little League. So that means the entire community will be having games at Fairway Park, no matter where they live in Pacifica, what team they're on. We plan on utilizing those fields to its maximum benefit. Over the past several years, though, you may also know, Pacifica National Little League has invested over seventy-five thousand dollars in the public parks. We've put new dirt there. We've upgraded equipment. We spent quite a bit of money, and that all comes from registration fees. And one of the premises of Little League is everyone gets to play. We're not travel baseball, we're not travel softball. You sign up, you get to play. And so we try to keep that affordable, accessible for everyone in town, as well as in the broader peninsula community, if they're in the range. Last year, you may have also seen that there was some damage with the storms last year. Luckily, it hasn't been too bad this year, but dugouts were blown off their foundations. There was damages to the backstops, which luckily, we didn't have to cancel too many games. And hopefully, this year, we don't have to cancel any either with the weather. I never met Roy Davies, but in researching his fund, I think this goes to the premise of what he was looking for when he gave the money to the city. So tonight, I request and urge you to follow staff's recommendation and approve the contract. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Is there anyone on the phone wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll return it to council for comments or motion.
Okay, go ahead. Um, sorry, I have a minor correction to the minutes, items, item two A on packet page thirty-three. I'll let Sarah get to that point. Tell me when you're ready, Sarah.
Okay, go ahead, I'm on page thirty-three.
So kind of the middle paragraph that starts, Councilmember Bowles understood that. There's, there's three pronouns that are wrong in the middle of that paragraph. She's hoping that they do not get through the process and then the coastal commission staff changes everything that we have done. And then we have something, not they, have something that we cannot approve again. So replace those two they's with we. And then at the end, last line, as staff is talking to staff, then come back to us, instead of just letting them put forth what they think is best. So replace them with us.
I've got those.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And then I just have one comment on item ten. So this is, ah, sorry, I don't, I mean. This is the money that we're getting for our edible food waste recovery program, and I completely support. So half of the money is going to the PRC for them to get money from restaurants and distribute them, which is terrific. So right now, it's showing that the other half of the money is going, or almost the other half, Public Works has spent some on compost and mulch. But the rest is going back to the county. And I'm really hoping that we can see how we might be able to keep this money in the city in the future. And I'm not asking this for this particular year, because this item is coming up and the money needs to be distributed to the county. But I had a conversation with Alejandro Warren of Classic Free Future, who's just terrific. And so her response to me was, it sounds to me like those nineteen thousand can be used to design a program for Pacific Gardens without any need for additional staff bandwidth. In fact, our organization has been dreaming of a community compost hub in Palmetto for years. We have options. So there's members of the community that have some ideas. I understand staff doesn't have the capacity to take this forward, but maybe we can consider some of those and keep our money here in town in the future. So that's all. Done so with that all.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Sue.
So many microphones to choose from. Um, I just want to tag on to what David Liel said about item twelve and the backstops. I don't know if it's really been all of the four years that his son has been playing, but I've been hearing about backstops for a long time from many members of the community. And this is one of those examples where staff really busted a move to make this happen. And I really have to call out Bob Placio. And thank you for that, Bob. Oh, yes, absolutely. And our engineering staff, without whom we could do nothing. It's just a team effort. And Horace has gone, oh, no, it's a team effort, Horace. And you guys did an amazing job with it. And, you know, I realize it's not perfect, we're not there yet, but we're making strides. So thank you for all that you did to make that happen for all those kids. And I'm really looking forward to the United Baseball this year to see how that works out and what that's like. So that's exciting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
I'll piggyback on that one as well. I do think like the partnership between the city and Little League is super important. It makes me really happy. I love Fairway Park. I love spending time out there. I love watching games out there with my family. There's a plaque out there for my nephew, Johnny. And yeah, so I'm very proud that the city's gonna be coming in and we can be partners with Little League. So thanks a lot for being here tonight.
I agree. Okay, does someone want to make a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda with the corrections to the minutes and the correct, item two A and the corrections to item nine lease. I move that we approve the consent agenda with the corrections to the minutes and the correct, uh, item 2A and the corrections to item nine lease.
I'll second. Please vote.
And for the consent calendar with items number two and number nine as amended, the motion made by Councilmember Bowles and seconded by Councilmember Big Stick. And the vote passes five to nothing, unanimous.
Thank you. Next item is public comments. For items not on the posted agenda, this portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the city council on any issue that is not on the agenda. Any person wishing to address the council shall be recognized by the mayor during this time, provided however, that only items not on the agenda for that meeting may be addressed. Comments on non-agendized items must address matters within the subject matter of the jurisdiction of the city. If comments do not address matters within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city, the city will provide you with an initial warning to stay within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. If the warning is not followed, the mayor will direct the city clerk to cut off the microphone. Council members shall not enter into any debate with speakers under public comments on items not on the posted agenda. A maximum of three minutes will be allowed for any speaker. And we do have one card. And, um, I'm sorry if I don't say this correctly, Shreya Jos- Joshi? Oh, okay. Talking about PCT. And say your name into the microphone, please.
Hello. Hi, my name is Shreya Joshi, and I'm with Pacific Coast Television. As you may have noticed, there have been an extra couple of people coming in on behalf of PCT. We wanted to let you know each year, PCT trains 30 to 40 college interns for television production. And council meetings are one of the vital productions for that training. So we apologize for any potential distractions, but we wanted to keep you in the loop. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
We have one raised hand.
Okay, so raised hand, please.
It is for John Contravecchi.
Okay, John, go ahead.
Sorry. Hello, my name is John Contravecchi, and I'm an attorney. I have a client who made an application for a 20-unit residential development in Lindemar called Hillside Meadows. The unit includes four below-market rate units as well. The application was complete on August 15th, 2020, which was three and a half years ago. The economic impact report was completed on May 23rd, 2022, which is one and three quarters years ago. The planning department hired Ringcon Consulting to prepare an environmental assessment of the property. And they had a kickoff meeting on February 23rd, 2023, which was one year ago. Now, according to the information I've been able to gather, the Ringcon Consulting report was presented to the city in draft form about seven months ago. I had been trying to get from the planning department information on the status of the environmental review, and I haven't been able to get a response. Now, I apologize for having to come to the council to ask you for help, but I'm asking if you could help me move this forward. I would like you to instruct the planning department to contact me and meet with me as soon as possible and tell me what's going on. And that's the reason I called.
Thank you, John. Are there any raised hands?
There are no other raised hands.
Okay, um, I will end the public comment and bring it back for council communications. Mr. Big Stick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Normally, this is the time when I look over at that table or notice that watching us from Zoom is President of North Coast County Water District, Jack Forget, who is not with us. And as Mayor Pretend says, watching us, he passed. And so I ask, Madam Mayor, as I know you were already intending to adjourn the meeting in honor of Jack, I'd also appreciate if, as we've done in some other occasion, perhaps we take that end adjournment time to reflect on Jack for a few moments and tell whatever stories are heard of us or flesh out whatever thoughts we may have on our mind as we process the transitioning of our friend. Aside from that, world affairs have me on my mind, but I'll speak later. I mean, people bad. I was delighted to read Kevin Woodhouse's op-ed in the San Mateo County Daily Journal. And it was well-written, A, and B, it occurs to me in your staff report. I think that because the Tribune is no longer in print, the, we probably have to post listings in the journal. I'm unclear, though, if you could give us a heads up on the staff report. I know in the past, we have used the journal, and now it seems obligatory. So if you could let us know how that works. I participated in the one-day or point-in-time homeless count. There will be information to come, I think, late May. Later on in the day, I was invited to a session from what's called Umbudsman Services, which apparently is a federal program that goes through the county, and the idea is that these are advocates for seniors in whatever capacity they might need help. And so I met with some of the people in that group, and then what followed was an interesting session about conservatorship and how it works. And so it was off the beaten path, but I, because I followed up on email, so that was interesting. And then in that evening was Peninsula Clean Energy. We were briefed about the Nexus Project, which is solar over irrigation canals. My understanding is this is to be a pilot. Apparently costs $20 million for a mile in which solar panels hang about three feet over the water, which has the twofold effect of conserving the water in the waterway because so much of it is lost to evaporation between North and South California. And then on the other hand, you have solar, so you're powering things simultaneously. So water conservation and solar power. So I think this is a pilot to see how it works. And it's the beginning for something that's potentially very big and very exciting for California and how we conserve water and gain energy. We onboarded a new hire, Chris Duarte, who's our new IT guy on PCE. I only bring this up because he's also a Pacifican. So we have some Pacifican working in the higher ranks of PCE. And big news, we're not raising our rates along with PG&E. Usually, Peninsula Clean Energy stays 5% under PG&E. That's how we create our rates. We decided not to follow PG&E's rates and keep our rates where they are, which approximates anywhere between 10% and 15% savings instead of our standard 5%, depending on what kind of customer you are. Attended the Council of Cities slash Santa Clara Cities Association slash Peninsula Division of Cal Cities Legislative Update Night. I was happy to co-host that with my fellow Legislative Action Committee member, Vicky Vinkers, from Palo Alto. And it was a great event, and it was good to have you all there and get some info from our friends up in Sacramento. I was invited to the Chinese consulate by my friend, the Deputy Consul General Xiao, excuse me, Joe. The 45th anniversary of US-China relations and also a Chinese New Year celebration. It was a split event. And happy Year of the Wood Dragon, Sunin Falao. And thank you, Joe, for inviting me. It was a great event. Attended the Library JPA meeting. Interethnica will be helping us with strategic planning for 2025. So I enjoy strategic plans and being there for them, and it'll be interesting to see how that unfolds. We also addressed various library policies, including about book access in this time in which it's suddenly, for some reason, become a hot-button issue around which books to ban. The San Mateo County Library System is resolved not to ban any. We think that information should be available. Attended the LAPCO meeting. It was a special LAPCO meeting this last Wednesday, and it was a special LAPCO meeting because of an appeal by the East Palo Alto Sanitary District. We decided to continue to go with the decision we made back in November that they should be made a subsidiary of the city. And that process will now move forward. The next LAPCO meeting is March 20th. We also talked about prioritizing, how we're prioritizing municipal service reviews. And basically, this is, there's a number of criteria the state looks at for each municipal service review. And we're supposed to, in theory, approximately every five years, go through all of them. Well, there's 20 cities and 22 independent districts that we'd be doing MSRs for. So it becomes important how we prioritize what we're doing when, how. In some of the variations, coastal cities, we would come up with in a year or two or three. So keep it on your radar. We might have a little bit of bureaucratic excitement as we get to find out the status of our city in a more robust fashion, as if we don't already know. I attended CCG. Now that I'm the backup for Sue, I want to learn the ropes and find out what's going on. I'll let her give the grand presentation, but we found out a bit about BAFFA, the tax measure that may be on the ballot coming up. And they're also developing a strategic plan, which delighted me because I get to learn about them through the strategic plan they're developing from the audience. So if my trajectory holds true and I one day wind up in that seat, I feel like I'm getting a really good rememer by being in the audience and how nice. Attended the Pacific Beach Coalition Surf Movie about Woody Brown. It was delightful. I think everybody attended that one. And this morning, there was a Peninsula Division Cal Cities meeting about the various events coming up. The Legislative Action Days, the City Leaders Summit is coming up, April 17th through the 19th. I urge everyone to go. It's kind of fun traipsing around Sacramento and making friends deeper with our legislative folk and learning how the system works more. You know, the physical space where it happens. I start nerding out a little bit when the time comes, but growing closer also with colleagues from across the area. So it's a good time to be held by all, and that's my report.
Christine?
I'll just call you guys.
No worries. I too participated in the one-day homeless count for the first time and, and got to ride with Councilmember Beckmeyer, driving all around Valimar and Rockaway. I drove. Yeah, she looked and counted. You can't do both at once. And we tramped through the muddy quarry site, looking for tents and so forth, too. But no, it's really interesting to get like a first-hand look at, you know, our, our vulnerable community that way. Interesting in, in seeing the data when it, when it comes out. I attended a webinar on SB4 with Penny Nixon, and I think Councilmember Bottalas was there as well. So SB4 is the new state law that allows churches and other institutions to build affordable housing on their sites in a just ministerial review. So kind of understanding the law and, and, you know, what churches need to look for. And then I'm, I'm also participating with the unhoused on the coast group, and some of those people are starting to reach out to churches here in Pacifica to see if there's interest as well. The Cal Cities Legislative Update, and thank you, Tiger, for helping organize that, too. And I was really impressed by, not one of our direct legislators, but Senator, State Senator Wahab from Alameda. And she's really tuned in on, on the need for affordable housing, too, and especially for single moms and seniors. She, one thing that struck me that she said is, she said, there's a silver tsunami coming that the numbers of, of seniors going into homelessness could triple by 2030. That's just, just a really sad statement on our society and not caring for each other. But hopefully, lighting a fire under us to do a little bit more here, here in our town. And we already have some, but I know there's a waiting list, and there's always a need. Let's see, I, um, attended the Pacifica's Environmental Family Event about the Coastal Act and the Coastal Commission. And I thought it was really well put together, very informative. Dr. Charles Lester, who used to be the Executive Director of the Coastal Commission, had a great presentation, but also answered really hard questions from the public and didn't shy away from that. And, and I think there's some good information there, you know, as we try to carry our conversation here forward. Kind of understanding the public trust land and that the shoreline's moving and that that becomes state land and, you know, after a while. And then some inspirational stories of, of, like, from the city of Monterey, knowing that they have to give room for the extra water to move in, and they're actually creating a bigger shoreline with more recreation space. So sometimes there are other alternatives to the standard armory and, and that can actually improve the city. And so hopefully, we can move past the fear and, and vision a little bit about what we want for our town as we move forward. And then, so after that, there was actually a comment from a constituent in Shoreview, and so I reached out to them and had a long meeting to understand a project that they were trying to get through the coastal commission now with a revetment. And it's just really important for me to understand my, my district and manner and that's facing the most erosion issues. So I'll have, have more about that to report back later. And then I decided I needed, last year, I, I didn't, I spent so much time learning about this job. And, and I see Tiger meeting with, you know, our state legislators all the time and developing good relationships. And I decided it was time for me to start that, too. So I actually had my first meeting with Ray Mueller, and he came to my house, and we had a good chat about electric homes and, and, and affordable housing and sea level rise issues. And then I'm also working on a, on a water capture project along the coast with, with the San Mateo Leadership Council. So it was really good to get some feedback from him on that, and we're focusing on Pascadero. That's, that's really having, having a lot of issues with water. Sorry?
Cool.
Cool, yeah. And then the next day, I met with Anthony Yoshida from Josh Becker's office. Also kind of trying to walk people through like the issues, again, especially in my district. And realizing that we can't handle this, we can't do all this on our own, that we really need the state, not just for funding, but leadership in terms of laws and so forth to give us a path forward. And so we, we talked at length about the bills that Senator Allen had introduced in the past that had actually made it through the legislature two, two years in a row, but then were vetoed by the governor. And these are, these are bills that would provide a revolving fund so that vulnerable properties could be purchased and then rented back. So nobody has to leave right away. They're being, you know, given, made whole for the, for the amount and the value of the property. But it gives us a chance to, to plan, you know, for the future. And anyway, so he promised to dig into that and, and try to understand why the governor vetoed them and, and if they might be able to be reintroduced. And then I watched the five-hour-long Planning Commission meeting on our housing element, objective design standards. And I just really want to thank the planning commissioners for doing that hard work. So, you know, we've got our housing elements submitted, but this, this is a document they're working on, and that will come to us as well that provides some basic standards so that hopefully, we don't get horrible projects. You know, things like height and setbacks and so forth for the different sites that we're rezoning to try to make room for these, you know, about 2,000 new units of housing. And there's change coming in Pacifica, and I just want everybody to know that. You know, we've been at 35-foot heights forever. And, you know, we're talking about going up to 55 now to provide the density for the, the housing that the state is forcing. to provide the density for the housing that the state is forcing on us. And those are hard discussions. And they've really slogged through those hard discussions. And so kudos especially to Samantha Hauser for leading and doing all the research on that. A couple of fun events, the Pirates of Manor and the Pacific Beach Coalition, their fundraisers were really fun. We have just a great community. Glad to be with it.
Do you want to say something else?
Just briefly, I was reminded when Christine was talking about the Planning Commission meeting, because I think we all had our power out in that particular moment. I watched it after the fact personally. But I just wanted to thank our staff, Public Works and Fire, Police, and probably Parks, Beach and Rec also.
I am.
Thank you, everybody, for, again, getting us through the storm.
Yeah, opening up the community center, that was a really wonderful thing. So thank you so much for that. Okay. Hi, everyone. Thanks for coming out. It's good to be civically engaged. Let's see, what did I do? I attended the Age Friendly Task Force meetings. We've been meeting twice a month because we're looking forward to completing. There's an online survey about age-friendly cities. And then we're going to be having focus groups and a town hall meeting. And so we have tentative date for the town hall, which is February 27th. Thank you Director Palacio for giving me that information. We do have a coalition meeting next Tuesday, February 13th, from 3:30 to 4:30. So, yeah, we're going to be moving forward, and all of the information that we collect through the surveys and through the focus groups will then inform our upcoming action plan with AARP. Our Heartboard meeting was canceled this month, which is unusual. So, yeah, that is actually really unusual. I attended the CCG Bike and Pedestrian Committee meeting, where we reviewed 10 projects from the Transportation Development Act Article III funding, projects from all over the region. And we were able to see Ryan, our Ryan. So I got to see him twice that week. And he presented for his new city. And so we are scoring all those applications, and there's 10 of them. And so we have until February 26th to complete those scorings. And it takes about two to three hours apiece to do all the scoring on each application. So it is a big chunk of time. I'm really grateful to be at the table and part of those conversations and the opportunity to bring more projects to our region and, you know, eventually to us, too. So that would be great. I watched the PCT recording of the Pacifica Environmental Families Education Forum about the Coastal Act. It was very, very informative. And having said that, I really want to thank PCT because I couldn't have watched it if they weren't there to record it. And that was going above and beyond what they're regularly contracted to do. And so it was really awesome that we have a public television station that goes out of their way to make sure that we get the information that we need moving forward. And I cannot say thank you enough for that because I got to watch it from home, and I got to take my time, and I got to rewind, and all those things, right, that we can do. So thanks a lot, Marty and Jason at PCT. The legislative panel was wonderful, Cal Cities. Thank you so much, Tiger, for being a part of that. I'm really glad you're there. Really glad you're there. It's always good to hear from all of our leaders across the state. I met with a group of constituents who are concerned about water safety after the accidents that happened during our king tides. I attended a webinar about the cold impacts on health and the county's inclement weather program. I, let's see, I coordinated the Pacifica Collaborative. We had the Pacifica Collaborative meeting, which included Tree City Pacifica. And also, we have a project that we're doing with the Sanchez Art Center and Pacificans Care. It's art for a peaceful and just community. And we're having all kinds of different kindness activities across the year in different sectors. And so we're doing Read Louds at the elementary schools. We're having a youth summit that's based on kindness. And then we have an event coming up, which is Leap Into Kindness. And if you want to see, there's some flyers on the back of the table. It's going to be really fun. It's a free community sing-along. It's on Thursday, February 29th, from 7 to 9 at the Mildred Owen Concert Hall. You know, it's just a way for us to get together and share some joy. And I think it's really important to understand that even when things, the world, the state of the world is so horrible, but we can create these pockets of kindness that are going to trickle out into our community and have a ripple effect. And so that's why we're doing it. I want to thank Cindy Abbott so much from the Sanchez Art Center and Bill Michaelis from Pacificans Care. Pacificans Care is sponsoring the event, and so it's going to be really fun, so come on out. I attended the Coast Pride Board Meeting. I also attended the Mental Health Service Act Steering Committee Meeting, where we talked about Proposition 1, which is going to be rerouting our Mental Health Service Act funding for the county. So please keep your eye on that. Read the fine print, please. I met with constituents about short-term rentals. And after that meeting, I came home, and there's a short-term rental very close to my house, like backing up to our fence. It's advertised for 19 people. There was absolutely more than 19 people there over the weekend. And I had, I have to cover my kitchen window because they can see right into the windows, and there are, I don't know. It's just not a comfortable thing to, like, have to cover a window, to feel like I have to do that. And so I just wanted to make that public comment about that. Because there's a lot of folks that, you know, have that kind of thing happening in their neighborhoods. We're going to be having a Pacifica Youth Summit on March 16th. I'll bring more information as we move closer to that. It's going to be at IBL from 11 to 2. We are looking for youth-centered agencies and groups to table at that event. And so it would be great if anyone's hearing me, just please contact me. We're going to have a really good keynote speaker. It's going to be our Chief of Police, I do believe. And so that is super awesome. Our young people are very excited about that, so. I think that's it. Thanks.
I can just add one more, sorry. Sue, Mary and I are on the Ad hoc Committee for the BBIRP. That's the seawall in Shark Park. And I just wanted to remind everybody that the meeting for that is on February 22nd at 6 o'clock. It'll only be on Zoom, and you do have to sign up ahead of time. So you can't just drop in, you know, at the last minute. So search for the city website, BBIRP, and you'll find the link to sign up.
Thank you so much for remembering that.
Sue Beckmeyer. Mary, the youth summit is the 16th of March. Did you say 11?
11 to 2.
11 to 2.
Ingrid B. Lacy.
Okay, thank you. Oh, we were all very busy. I was very busy as well over the last couple of weeks. Three weeks, right? Because we had that extra Monday. So we had more time to do stuff on behalf of the city. I will say, I want to report out on my Beautification Advisory Committee meeting, because it was still fresh, and let you know what we talked, what the committee talked about, and kind of some interest that they expressed. We were fortunate, the committee was fortunate to have a presentation, an update from Cindy Abbott on the mural or the, actually, the Mural Subcommittee is what it's called. But it really specifically has to do with beautification through public art. So she went through the whole policy, I mean, didn't, like, chapter by chapter, but, you know, that, there is one, what it covers, how it came about, et cetera. And that was a really good segue and talked about murals that have been approved on city-controlled public property or adjacent that are controlled by other public agencies, such as the Pop of Color. Protect What You Love mural over by Eureka Square, that's really Cal trans-ism. But what was an interesting outcome of that conversation was discussion about other possible kinds of public art that might be not as big and as expensive to produce and as lengthy to produce. So a lot of different ideas were floated about. Things like painting streets. I know. Oh, he's not there. Engineers don't like, although Lisa's there. They don't like to hear about that. But I learned a new acronym I want to share with you all. It is MUTCD. Anybody? It is not. It is. The Department of Transportation's Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. There is a manual. I learned something. And the interesting thing, and Cindy shared an article, which Lisa is reviewing, our Director of Planning, Lisa Peterson. And it has to do with painting corners, like at crosswalks. And so I'll just pass this packet. There's two or three picture pages if you want to take a look. Just to share, just so you know, and the discussion will go on. This is not like, they're doing it. This is, they brought it up, and they're looking into the possibilities. But there are other things, like the junction boxes for our signals, that there are ways to do wraps, like art is made into a wrap and the wrap goes around the box. And we all talk whenever we drive in Milbrae and
St. Bruno.
and Daly City and see the PG&E boxes that are painted. And I want you to know, I am working on that for us personally in terms of government affairs. But it's a long shot, so, you know, don't get excited just yet. But for now, we have our own boxes that we can be looking at and talking about and figuring out. So people are very excited. The one thing I loved on the packet is the shadow art. Yeah, it's super cute. And I was thinking, and something that came up, it talked about other cities where some of the art they do isn't permanent. And, I mean, I thought, how fun if we did a shadow art like day, you know, with chalk or something. Anyway, that was just me thinking it. And it would be for the committee, of course, to discuss, not me as the liaison. So that was that. It was a fun meeting and lots of, lots of information. I attended a lot of other meetings and participated in a lot of other things. Your legislative update and fantastic, great job. I was so proud of you. And we were treated to the opportunity because this was a collaboration between Council of Cities and the Santa Clara County's Council of Cities, except they don't call it that, and Cal Cities, which, so basically, three organizations in one, that all have overlapping interests. And the Chair of the Peninsula Division, if I'm not mistaken, works for Hewlett Packard. And that's where it was held. And so it was a great space, a big enough space, and we were able to enjoy some camaraderie here from legislators, here, allege, update, see great panels, and also be in a very historic space for Silicon Valley. So that was neat, except for, did I mistake something?
I think former Chair, but yeah.
Okay, former Chair. Oh, yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
Oops, sorry.
Regardless, though, she hooked us up big time with that space. It's a very cool space, and it was like stepping through the looking glass for an evening, and it was, it was very cool.
It was very neat. So that was, that was great. Participating in the one-day homeless count was the first time I'd ever done it. You have to get up really early, like really early. And amazingly, I managed to do that. Our day was really well spent. And they have an app that you use, you put on your phone, to record people, sleeping vehicles, people, you know, housed, unhoused in different ways or no housing whatsoever. And all of that data will be rolled up together for not just the city of Pacifica, but for the county and released back to us at some point several months from now to give us an update. But it was really exciting for me to see PCT staff in action. We hear updates from Anita all the time. PRC, did I say it wrong? Oh, PCT and PRC, no. PRC, Pacifica Resource Center Staff in Action. You know, it felt like, almost like a ride-along, really, to me. So we were super fortunate to have one of the homeless outreach workers with us, and I learned so much from him. It was a great day, a great morning. Had a whole rest of the day afterwards. Who knew? Okay, the other things, a couple of quick things that weren't really mentioned before. I met with the mayor and the city manager on what I'm calling strategic goal-setting. The idea being, you know, you know, it's the mayor, Mayor Protem's job to work with city manager on planning and talk about it all. And I'm remembering for myself that we have a strategic plan that we agreed on, mission and values and all that, last year. And it's not just a one-and-done. It's a multi-year plan. And that's why, for me, throwing in the word strategic goal-setting feels like it just helps me remember that that exists. I chaired my first Coastal Cities group. I mean, pre-meeting to do the meeting, the meeting before the meeting. My husband used to work for a company, a European company, and there literally would be always a meeting before the meeting. And he'd just like, "There's so many meetings." It's a good idea because you've got to keep it tight. These people expect one hour. They're from all over the state. You know, great support from Cal City staff.
One hour?
Boom. Chaka-laka. Yep. Keep it tight, baby. Once a month, we do subcommittees if we need to or other meetings because there's other things to go to and participate in, such as tomorrow, the Ocean's Protections Council has a Central Coast update about their recently released Sea Level Rise guidance that I mentioned last time at some length. They are offering three webinars. Tomorrow's the one related to our, our area, and I'm attending, which will be a cute trick because it sort of falls a little bit during my workday. So I've got to make that work. It's at 2:00 PM.
Were you able to share that?
Ocean Protection Council, yes. I'll forward it to you. So that, you know, we talk about things like that. What we mostly did for our meeting was talk about our work plan. And really, it's all about communication, communication, communication. Because we're a leadership group, so we're, we have a region that we need to be reaching out to and hearing from and talking to. But we also realized there's a lot of other council members who maybe aren't part of that exact committee but have interest because they're also in Coastal Cities. So we are initiating quarterly Zoom meetings. I think it's a Zoom. I don't know what the mechanics are behind the scenes, but it's a webinar format. And the first one's next week. Yipes? So that's exciting. And of course, what we'll be talking about, Ocean Protection Council, Sea Level Rise, release of, you know, numbers. It's a hot topic. So that's happening, so that's exciting. The other things that we're doing is our staffer from Coastal Cities is helping the staff team to give us contact information for the people in our regions to facilitate reaching out. And we're working with, I forgot what his title is, but Seth. What's Seth do?
Seth Miller. He's the staffer for Peninsula Division.
For the, so the regional divisions, we're also liaising with them to have crossover information sharing. Communicate, communicate, communicate. The last thing I'll say is, the other thing I did besides that was Lions, Lions, Lions. So I was unable to attend the work day at the bumpouts or something because I was at an all-day, can you imagine, long Lions District meeting? But was the Pacifica tie-in there? Is, we had, of course, the best showing. But was the Pacifica tie-in there is we had, of course, the best showing because we had to because we haven't been to one of those in a long time. I mean, we got called out. Oh, and they call the cities and the different, I mean, the clubs, kind of like a council cities, they call the cities, they call the club names for, for, um, role. And they, they call Pacifica, Pacifica, and our vice chair says, here. And it's nice to see you in the house, you know, like we totally got called out. But the benefit of that, people came up to me who are members of other Lions clubs around in the city, on the peninsula, who live in Pacifica. So there is, when we're out there and doing this stuff, we are actually connecting over the hill. This was at Tierra Linda Middle School in San Carlos. Anyway, um, the last thing I'll say about the Lions is, you know, they've been a really active group in our town for many years. I mean, longer than we've had a town, um, longer, way longer. Um, nineteen forty-eight or nine was the very first meeting. And Nick Gus was one of the founding, um, Lions. And the Lions, uh, has the opportunity occasionally to do some benefit work for, uh, nonprofits in town and community groups. And we were able to do some grants, give some grants that, uh, were, we had an opportunity to help soften the blow from some of the, um, earnings numbers for Fog Fest. And so it was really about the groups. It wasn't about Fog Fest so much as having worked Fog Fest for many groups for many, many years. Over time, I know how much the groups depend on that income and plan on it. It's incorporated into their budget. And of course, they always know, don't plan on it, you know, it's kind of one of those like E R A F or something. But it, you also do plan on it. And so the goal was to really keep community strong. And that's really what Pacifica is all about. And so that happened. Um, and that's all I have to report.
I have a lot of overlaps, so I'll go through them quickly. Um, I went to the Home for All meeting on church properties and the information provided. And there was a lot of information. Um, Charles Lester and the Coastal Act, the Council of Cities Thank You Tiger and the ledge. It was nice to talk to the legislators too, because we don't see them that often. And, um, I attended the One Shoreline meeting, which is all about sea level rise, but mostly on the bayside, which I comment on frequently. Um, the check distribution for the Fog Fest. And I was going to thank the Lions so much because they came up hugely to support the, um, the groups that work there. Um, I went to Housing Our People Effectively. Um, they talked about the new law that in the county, if you don't take, if you're homeless and you don't take the help, they, um, can actually cite you. And I believe it's a misdemeanor. So someone asked the question, how many encampments are there? In the county, there are eight, which seemed small, but there are sixty-eight people living in those encampments. So it's quite a lot of people and it's a really involved, they don't plan on arresting anybody or citing anybody. The goal is to get people help. But they did say there are lots and lots of people who don't want help. So the, there are a lot of issues about why people are in the position they're in. Some people want help and some don't. Um, I attended the movie night. That was a great event. Um, City and County Association of Governments, the legislative meeting. We talked about the budget and the changes in staff. And, um, a couple of bills, our local Diane Pappin, um, has a couple of bills, uh, one on Brown Act. And I forget what the other one, sorry. Um, and then I attended the regular City and County Association of Governments, which mainly we did the strategic planning, which is just part of the strategic planning. And again, I always bring up the coast over and over. Guess they're sick of me, but I don't care because I'm going to keep doing it. Um, and the, the ledge meeting did talk about the changes in staff to, um, in the state, which is really important. The, the, um, the speaker pro tem and those kinds of positions all changed. And so a lot of the people who were on certain committees and heads of committees are no longer. So it makes, it's going to be like a learning curve, I think, for them. Um, I went to the Shared Prosperity Council, um, which was formerly the COVID Recovery Council. And we got massive statistics, just forty minutes of statistics. So, um, I can't exactly say all of it, what, what, and they're going to send us all the slides because it's important things like jobs, housing, um, income, everything involved in the whole county. So that was long. Um, I did watch the Planning Commission at nine thirty after our power turned on after twenty-nine hours of no power, same as Christine, and it was horrid. So, um, and, and I read that P G N is giving some people twenty-five dollars if your power was out for more than forty-eight hours. And, uh, I filled my garbage can with food, filled and still had more. So it was horrid. Um, I talked to many different constituents about short-term rentals, dogs, trash. Um, you name it. It's, it's, you talk to them about everything and that was, that was just a few. So I'm going to end there because we did overlap on quite a few things. So, um, okay, now staff communications.
Thank you, Mayor Vardalas, Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer and council members, Kevin Woodhouse, city manager. I just have a few communications I'd like to provide. First, I want to wind back to the Sunday before last during, during the storm and just make a couple of comments as council members already did concerning that. So the major impact seemed to be the extremely high winds that day, lots of trees down, power lines and such. And unlike previous storms, Pacifica lost all power. It seemed that previously, you know, power was out elsewhere in the county and didn't hit Pacifica as much. But all the power went out in Pacifica, which is a little bit different, uh, different circumstance. So we did make the call that day, as Councilmember Vera mentioned, to open up the community center as a comfort center, people can come down, charge, be in a, a, a lit place, comfortable, comfortable. And, uh, we, uh, thanks to Director Palacio who staffed it. Uh, in addition to, you know, all of our first responders from police, fire and public works that were running around the city dealing with stuff. So we did staff that, had a handful of people that showed up that evening, which was great. Then the power went on to like half the community, so we didn't keep it open all night. It didn't seem necessary to do that. And then the next morning, there were again, uh, a handful of people that stayed throughout the day. We had tables set up in the, in the open areas and, and the space was utilized for people to work and charge their devices. So that, in my experience, was the first time we had opened the community center, comfort center. Uh, we have a generator that, that runs, uh, to allow that to happen if the power's out at the community center too. Uh, but thanks, we've made it through that. Um, and then on, uh, as the weather got better up here on Tuesday, early morning, I climbed on a plane to fly down to Los Angeles where it was torrentially downpouring that entire day. So I, I just didn't want sun and I wanted to go from rain to, to rain. Thankfully, the winds weren't that bad down in Los Angeles. But I was down there for the League of California Cities, City Managers Department meeting on Tuesday. Uh, as the council knows, I'm a member of the Cal ICMA, which is a, uh, the state affiliate of ICMA, the International City County Managers Association. We had a strategic planning session on Tuesday. Um, the comment I'll make about Cal ICMA and ICMA general is it's, it really focuses on professional development, the pipeline for local government management and ethics. And, and so it's very near and dear to my, my heart and the profession. Lots of great contacts through that, which, which do help, I believe, with recruitment and retention of quality employees in our profession in Pacifica, in our region. So it's a very important organization. I also sit on the Executive Committee for the, the League City Managers Department. And we had our business meeting Wednesday morning before the conference started. And that was incredibly informative because it's a very large overview of what's happening statewide. Uh, League Executive Director Carolyn Coleman, uh, gave presentations as well as a lot of policy committee folks. But one, a couple of points I'll, I'll make about that at a statewide level. This is going to be an unbelievable year legislatively and leading up to the election in November. And then one of the messages as well is layered onto that are some artificial intelligence capabilities that for better or worse will be used in various ways during the election. So it's going to be maybe a bit chaotic during, during the election season. Just a, a point that we can all prepare ourselves for as we, as we head into this. Talking about A I, at the conference, there was a keynote speaker about artificial intelligence and some of the creative ways that can be used in, in our profession and in local government management. So that was informative. Um, and some, you know, discussion about some of the challenges with that. So all in all, the, the conference was very productive. Great to connect with colleagues from all around the state and hear what everyone is dealing with all around the state. Sometimes different things in different regions, but often very much the same struggles that we have. I wanted to provide a couple of other communications. One, going back to Councilmember Big Stick's comment, uh, I had the, the op-ed piece that, that I had written was for the Public C E O, which is an online journal. So that was in Public C E O and it's available at publicceo.com. And that was about, uh, our L C L U P process. And the title of it was Pacifica Seeks Creative Pragmatic Solutions to Coastal Planning Challenges. The piece you were referring to, the Daily Journal did run a piece and Planning Director Murdoch and Coastal Commission Staff Stephanie Rexine were both quoted in, in that journal article, which is talking about our L C L U P process locally.
Read them at almost the exact same time, so apologize for the speaking.
No, yeah, no, no worries. Um, I wanted to mention, uh, a few meetings that are upcoming that have, uh, some have already been mentioned. Councilmember Bowles mentioned on February twenty-second, the Beach Boulevard Infrastructure Resiliency Project Meeting is coming up, six P. M. It will be just, uh, via Zoom. The team and the ad hoc committee determined that that's the most productive, uh, format for, for this version of the meeting. And a mailer, citywide mailer went out regarding that last week. The, following that, we have on March second, Saturday, March second, the third meeting for the local coastal land use plan process. And that will be held at the Terranova Theater. We're still working out some of the, uh, the hybrid filming and Zoom participation, uh, technicalities. But we're pretty sure that's going to work. It's a large theater. It will handle people. It's a little, little bit of a different format for a meeting, but, uh, the council had directed that we, we looked to that. That's March second. And then, uh, Saturday following that, on March ninth, as mentioned by Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer, is the City Council's Strategic Plan Update Process for this year. The other announcements that I did want to mention are that tomorrow, we will make the determination and release a press release relating to opening half of the main pier on Wednesday. So we are likely to open it on Wednesday, but the actual determination won't be made and the, and the release done until tomorrow after some last, uh, final work. And just to reiterate that due to the information we put out before, the, the most westerly half of the pier will need to remain closed. Only the most easterly half will open at this point in time. Additionally, I wanted to mention that, uh, take just a minute, this will be my final communication, to talk about the Sanchez Library, Library Outpost, uh, technology that's going to be implemented and is under construction. The, I'll take a minute and just read what, what we wrote in Connect with Pacifica. And then I want to make the clarifying point that as I, right after I put this information out on Friday, we heard from the, uh, county library team and the construction team that the concrete pour, the, the Sanchez was going to be closed this week due to the concrete pour for the facility. But the, uh, an A, a final A D A survey needs to be completed before the concrete pour. So Pacifica Sanchez Library is open this week to be determined when it will be closed to facilitate the concrete pour. But progress is occurring. And the, the outpost will increase access to the library's collection through easy-to-use twenty-four-hour, seven-day-a-week automated library vending hubs. It doesn't replace the, uh, in-person Sanchez Library, it augments it. And, uh, during the construction, the library services continue to be available. And it's expected to be completed this spring. More putting it in the context of Pacifica's libraries, uh, project is that uh, this will be the first of its kind in the county, uh, lending machines, which is exciting. So that puts us on the path towards cutting-edge library services and fits with Pacifica's and San Mateo County libraries and the community's vision for modernization of Pacifica's libraries. And it's a step towards our open access model that was envisioned. Collection and materials in addition to the in-person library programming and services currently provided. So the city and San Mateo County libraries are working towards a vision to bring modern library facilities to Pacifica with a new full-service Sharp Park Library and renovation of Sanchez Library. And the construction, again, of the outpost is moving us in that direction. So that'll be exciting as it moves forward. The rain, the weather has, uh, hampered some of that and delayed again some of the concrete pour. And then, uh, the, the final A D A survey is necessary. But we'll be working through it and moving toward that. Those complete my communications.
Um, city manager, um, when you say final A D A survey, you're talking about a surveyor with a, like, surveying machine? Is that what you mean?
Uh, correct. I don't know the exact details, but we're talking about the, the final sign-off on the slopes of the concrete and such, which just.
And is that expected to take a long time or add a week or add, we don't know?
I, I, I don't know offhand. I reached out to the library director today and, and it was just too late to determine with the team. So we'll be putting the information out once we know.
I want to thank you and Sarah and Elizabeth for. Um, we found out two days before it was going to happen, or literally the day before, really, from a packet standpoint, or I mean, a Connect with Pacifica standpoint. And then it changed. But the goal was to try to get the word out because there's a lot of folks that use that library. And to suddenly have it be closed and there had been no forewarning. I mean, we knew there will be some days when that library will need to be closed, but hopefully we'll have a little bit of an opportunity for more notice for those who use email. The library does send emails out to patrons to tell them, but if you don't use email, you don't know that. So, um, uh, can I follow up on a couple of other items? I don't know if that's okay. Um, on the, is it possible to? Oh, it's up to the chair.
Council can ask questions.
Okay, um, regarding the L C L U P meeting, that's going to be at Terranova High School. Do you have a timeline on the mailer for that one? I got a few questions about that this week. Because they know it's coming and they're expecting it, but haven't seen it and they're getting like, where is it? Where is it? Where is it? In a really polite.
You know, has anybody received it? Because I thought maybe it went out last week, but we're, we're finalizing it.
The B burp we got, I got.
Yeah, I got the B burp.
The, the, the L C L U P meeting mailer is, uh, probably in the mail as we speak or will be in the mail very shortly. I think we were waiting until we absolutely verified. I think we were waiting until we absolutely verified that Terranova Theater is going to work.
Right.
And I'm pretty confident it's going to work and we're going to go with that. We're going to make it work and then the mailer will be out.
Thank you. And thank you for looking for a large venue because it seems to me with the volume of email and comments I've been receiving lately, we're going to need a big venue. This has become an issue of grave concern to many Pacifica residents of late. And, and yay, because then we'll get input and they'll have information and we'll make a good decision. If I may follow up on something Councilmember Bowles mentioned. In regard to the Allen bill, I, my brain can't remember right now, but I know that Coastal Cities Group took a, a pose unless amended position on that bill, which fed into Cal Cities' position. And it had to do with the funding. Because even though it's like, oh, a loan, yay. We know loans have to be paid back. And these realities are, these seem like great ideas, but when you get into the nitty gritty, it's not such a great idea for the city. That doesn't mean a bill couldn't be crafted that would address those concerns. And that would be certainly something we'd be hearing about through the legislative update through Coastal Cities Group. And I will absolutely bring updates on that whenever there are any.
And, and I am communicating that we do not have the money for this.
Yeah. I mean, that's the thing, everybody wants a quick, and we'll do this, you know, there's a bill and blah, blah. And it just doesn't work that easily. And then when you are honest about, mm, yeah, not really possible, it looks like, well, you're just recalcitrant. You don't really want to do it. And it's really not that. It's about we're in charge of Pacifica and we, our job, this job is keep our funding straight. Help our city move forward. And we have to rely on our staff and all of the moving parts that all cost money, including not just our money that we generate from our property taxes and such, but funding that we bring in as Councilmember Beer was talking about with the bicycle things. A $300,000 bike lane, we don't have the money for. But through a grant process, we will. $19 million pier update, we don't have the money for. But through, you know, continuing to work with our legislators and get the word out about this important, critical regional asset and the need to repair it, we will. So that's, you know, that's why it takes so long. This afternoon, I was talking to the mayor and she goes, everything with government just takes a long time. I think that's how you said it. And it's very hard to express that to our community. So I'm just restating it. I know you know that, but there you are.
Okay. And, and I also, I went by the community center when I had no power not to charge, but just to see. And I saw about 10 people during the day sitting at tables on their computers, charging. And it was a really great thing. And I was happy to see people that were there. And thank you all for, for everything because that was really important.
And if we get our new library built, that can be a community resilience hub too.
Even in its yucky-ish state, the Sharp Park Library was that. It, it because, and now how, how that exactly worked with city staff and the communication. But my understanding is pallets of phone charging units with some snacks and something for bundled. And they were just dropped off at Sharp Park and made available to people. And when I went in there, I go in there about three times a week because I have to get things for my job, my day job. And there were a lot of people. And I realized, oh yeah, they don't have power in certain parts of the city still. And they had been there specifically to come to a place that they could work in addition to the community center.
And they ran out of those rapidly, very fast. Okay. Now there are no, this is the most unusual meeting that I've ever been to. There are no public hearings, there are no consideration items. So our final thing that we want to do tonight is to adjourn in memory of Jack Forget, who we often saw, like you said, sitting in the back. He called me periodically because we were going through some similar things at the same time. And he would just call me and go, hey kid, what's up? Hey kid. He, he just was the best. And we had a meeting with him and he talked to us. He gave us like stories of how he met his wife, about being a coach, about just his life. And I was so thankful to have that, to have him here. Devoted, 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 having chemo and coming to our meetings. Just an amazing man. And every, sorry, I know I spoke first and usually I go last, but I wanted to just say how we're going to miss him.
Yeah. My, I, I, I realized when we were meeting with him and speaking with him and hearing different stories, that I knew Jack and his wife Diane. I love Jack and Diane because it makes me think of that song, right? Way before I knew them, because I ate the shrimp Louie salads that they were responsible for making at the Moose Lodge on the first Friday of the month for years. And this is, the Moose Lodge is a volunteer run operation. So, and there's only food for members on Thursday and guests on Thursday night and Friday night. And there's a schedule of like, there's meatloaf one time and there's prime rib one time and there's da, da, da. And I was always so excited when it, my schedule worked out that we could go on shrimp Louie night because it was the best shrimp Louie you've ever had. This big old platter with all this bay shrimp and delicious, delicious. And so I found out later, oh, that was Jack and Diane in that kitchen making those, all those salads that I ate. So, I mean, just the, I don't even know where to start. I, I'm sad that I didn't get a chance to know Jack better than I did. I'm so grateful for the amount that I did get to know him because I felt like I'd known him my whole life. I just, he's, he's just such a, he's such a kind person and such a, I mean tough, I mean Semper Fidelis. Marines always show up first. That's how he answered his phone, that, on his phone message. Tough Marine, I mean, no fooling around, but also a coach for many, for generations of football players. I ran into an article, we were cleaning out a storage thing. And I ran into an article about him that San Francisco State was honoring him. From, and it, you know, he, coaching for 50 years, coaching for 60 years, it's incredible. And so his commitment and honestly, he wants, I know he still does, to see that North Coast County Water District project done and, and opened. And he will be looking down and trust me, he won't be communicating in the same way, but he will be communicating with us about that project. And I love him and I'm going to miss him.
But he saw it through to the writing on the wall. And that wasn't the case when I first met him. You know, we had that ad hoc, as you recall, to try and solve our moment of consternation as we seemed to have a difference of opinion between organizations. And initially it was Tom and Josh and then Tom moved on and Jack took over that gig on the ad hoc. And then I began getting to know him. And, you know, you could kind of see this, this tug in him because he very much wanted to speak his truth, end of story and be done with it. And at the same time, he very intentionally struggled with that part of himself to be able to communicate why, where his heart was, where his mind was, and to work with hearts and minds that maybe had a different approach. And getting to know him over that very short amount of time. Whenever Josh would talk to him, what do you think, coach? And, you know, you just pick up on these subtle things and you follow that trail. That one word expands into, as you said, serving generations. And how many, how many people did he teach to be upright, communal, to cultivate themselves as well as a sense of community? And so getting to know him, this being kind of unfolded before me and I saw him again struggle with himself fairly regularly, but I also saw him open up way past the training that I know he cultivated in himself to be tough as nails once upon a time. And to transcend that mere training, to be honest with himself to the point of knowing that he need not be only tough as nails and that there was this entire other side of himself that was just as strong when it could be shown and communicated. He referred to love. He was a no BS kind of a guy on the one hand. And on the other hand, he was no BS to the point that he could look you in the eye and tell you that he felt love toward you. He led with nothing but respect toward me anyway. And even in those moments where he had no choice within himself but to show that agitation, at the end of the day, he knew how to pull it back, look you in the eye, shake your hand and get on with it. So I'll, I'll leave it there, but I, I have every respect for someone who, who truly service was finding the entirety of himself so that he could serve the best, the entirety of us.
I'm just sad that I didn't get to know him as well as all of you. I mean, my, my relationship with him is mostly in this room where he was always here early. Like, what are you doing? I mean, first of all, what are you doing here at all of our meetings? I mean, you really don't need to be here, right? And especially when you're sick and you might be exposing yourself. Oh no, he had to be here every time. And he wasn't, and, and he was here early, like we'd have a closed session. It's like, what are you doing for the closed session? I mean, we're just in this other room, we can't even talk to you. But he was there in the back. And, and I think about his illness and, and his strength and, and fighting it, his, his hope that he was going to be able to fight it, that he could, you know, be here a little bit longer with us. I, I think that's, it's such a measure of a person to see how they handle, you know, basically a death sentence, right? That he, he knew he was only here a certain amount of time and yet he still kept living every day the same way. The way, I mean, that was true to his character. And always so welcoming and glad to see people and, you know, really making each of us feel special, I think, when we walked in the room when he was still sitting there in the back. I'll, I'll miss him too.
I don't know if any of you ever watched any of the North Coast County Water Department meetings, but Jack showed up dressed to the nai, to the nai. Like he had a suit, his tie. And I was looking at some pictures of him and he was the same way when he coached. He had a hat, tie, like he's, yeah, Jack was just so incredible. I'm super sad that he's gone. And I wanted to thank some of our staff members who sat in the back of the room with him and helped him. Yeah, specifically Captain Clements, I, I noted that he, he made sure that Jack got in and out of here okay. And things like that really make a difference in community. That's how we take care of each other. And I've known, so I went to school with Jack's kids, Danny and Kim. And had a little crush on Danny, you know, we had a little thing. And so when we had the opportunity to be in the ad hoc team, our, our ad hoc meetings with him, I got to tell him how scary he was when I was a kid. He was scary. Like we would, if we were walking down the street, Odd Spad Boulevard, we would cross the street and walk so we didn't have to pass the house because he would yell. He, he was, he was scary. And, and tough, scary people make really good coaches. And what he did with those athletes, and maybe we can talk to Horace a little bit about, about Jack. Every time they spoke to him, Josh, Tom, they called him coach. Hey, coach, coach, right? And that's such a sign of, of respect. But when I told him that he scared us weird kids, he, he blushed a little bit. He was like, I, I, I scared, I'm so sorry darling. So sorry, I scared you when you were a kid. But the beauty of coming together as an ad hoc committee surpasses any disagreement or uncomfortableness between agencies. None of that mattered because we were able to take that opportunity and create relationship that goes way beyond any decision made or any argument. And it, that's what we need to learn about when we go out there and we have the opportunity to meet and to know other people and to work with them and to create relationships. Because that's what we did with Jack. And I'm going to miss him terribly. I gave him this little crystal, the little garnet to hold for when he was in chemo. And every time I would see him after that, he'd go, darling, I got your rock, it's right here. And man, I love you, Jack. And I'm so thankful that we had disagreements between agencies because I got to know that heart of a man and I, yeah, thank you so much, Jack.
I think we'll take 30 seconds of silence to remember him. Thank you. And with that, we adjourn the meeting and in honor of you. Honor, honor. Honor, honor.